It is 5:30 PM and I now call to order the Grand Island Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. This is the November 13th, 2025 meeting. Notice of this meeting has been advertised in the Grand Island Independent, which is the district's designated method for giving notice of these meetings. We want those in attendance to know that copies of the Open Meetings Act are available at the entrance to the boardroom. If anyone in attendance is interested in addressing our board, you are welcome to do so. We simply request that you complete the appropriate form and turn it in to us so that you may be recognized during the request to address the board part of our meeting. If you have not already completed the form, please see the staff person outside the entrance to this room. Public comment is welcome, but we do ask that no signs be brought into the boardroom. Mrs. Divert, will you please call the roll?
Mr. McFarland, Mr. Eric Garcia Mendez, and Mr. Sykes have all given prior notice of their absence. Mr. Hawley.
Present.
Mrs. Albers.
Here.
Mr. Bars- Barsonus, sorry. Mrs. Douglas.
Here.
Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Goodman.
Here.
Moving on to item three, the consent agenda. The first item is the consent agenda tonight. The consent agenda is to be approved as follows. Items 3.1 through 3.10. This is the consent agenda as published. Would anyone like to remove any items or add any items to the consent agenda? Does anyone have a potential conflict of interest on agenda item 3.3? If so, please state the check number that you'll be abstaining from voting on. With that, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Make a recommendation to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Motion by Mr. Barsonus, second by Mrs. Albers. Feel free to vote. Item number four, special recognition. We are going to hold off on this for a little bit. Our special guests are not here yet. We expect them in about a half hour. So we will move on to item number five, request to address the board. I don't believe we have any.
No, there are none.
All right. Moving on to information items, item 6.1, the presentation on educational programming that is being developed at the Epic Center. Mr. Scott Mazur.
Thank you very much, board, for allowing me time to come here and talk to you about Epic. I hope I can convey the excitement we have for Epic to you guys and what a partner we hope to be with GIPS and support in any way kids of Grand Island that are learning because it is very much worth it. Spent my career in education and I'm just excited to continue that with Epic. So, anyone not heard of Epic, or have any of you heard of Epic? Raise of hands, please. I'm a principal. Okay, there we go. Thank you very much. So, Epic is formerly Grand Island Children's Museum, and it's been about a 10-year process from concept to actuality. It's kind of a real thing now. If you've been on Old Potash Highway, you can see the construction is taking place and the, you know, where we're at currently is we are now Epic Discovery Center. There's been a change in focus from just K5 to all the way from zero to 18 for our service. And so, we plan on serving kids from zero through 18, which is an overwhelming kind of thought, but one that we are very much welcome and are looking forward to. And so, I am helping with programming at Epic. And so, I'm going to be, you know, moving through those channels to try and provide activities outside of our scope of just our museum floor and all of the static exhibits. We'll be doing other things to try and support the kids. So, Epic is going to be more than just the exhibit floor, but I want to talk to you about the exhibit floor. It's going to have 25 static exhibits. It's going to be a STEAM-based experience. So, kids will come in and we'll be focused on science, technology, engineering, the arts and math, and truly in an epic environment. We're going to have a climber that is crazy two stories. We're going to have an amazing airways exhibit that allows kids to put things into some tubes that wander through a series of airways and pop out on the exhibit floor or go into our climber. And what I'm most proud, I guess, about those things is that they're very inclusive. They're going to allow kids that either don't want to be up in that climber or can't be for any reason to have an experience just like kids in the climber would be. It'll be interactive, and that happens in our museum in a number of locations. We're going to have stuff on the south end that is a construction zone that has a, you know, ability to interact with both floors on there and have a building experience with building materials. And then a conveyor belt will take that up to the second floor, bring it back down. So, there are a number of things that are interactive and interactive not just in the museum, but amongst the kids that are doing it. So, range from that to STEAM-based exhibits involving Bernoulli principles to stop-based animation to, you know, black light disco. I expect you all to be out there participating in that at some point. But it will be 25 wonderful experiences for kids. And so, we really are proud of what we're going to offer, but it's so much more than just the exhibit floor. We are going to have a makerspace area where, if you're aware of what a makerspace is, it's just a place for kids and adults to make things. And we hope to have a number of opportunities for, again, zero through 18 is a challenge to have makerspace that serves all those kids, but we plan on doing that, whether it's a group of six through eight-year-olds delving into a huge batch of cardboard to our older kids utilizing 3D printers and laser printers and vinyl cutters and all those things. So, in addition to that, then, we're going to have four doors, excuse me, four rooms on the south end. I think, I'm thinking of the museum right now. So, if I use my hands and do this, that's what I'm going through. So, those four rooms are basically the ones that overlook Old Potash Highway, and they will be for our older kids, for high school kids, middle school age kids mainly. And they will be, one is an art experience, an art studio. One will be a clean technology room where all things computers and software that supports specific career choices that may involve STEAM-related fields, you know, that'll range. And then, one will be a lounge where kids are just expected to come in and be a part of our community and be welcomed as much as they are in GIPS and have the ability to just hang out with other kids. Will be open till later on at night, and so, we're hoping that we can be that resource for kids that keeps them in a somewhat protected atmosphere, much like the school system does. And then, our fourth area will be a classroom that is mainly there to support our programming. We hope to offer a huge variety of vibrant programming for all the kids, especially in high school and upper middle school, clubs, organizations, experiences with professionals coming in to talk about careers and hopefully promote some internships and some pathways with businesses. So, we are fired up. We just went up to Minnesota to observe our fabrication in action up in Minneapolis. And I could have stayed up there for hours and hours just playing with all the gadgets, but it will be a little while before that's all done. It's probably going to be late spring before we open because they have to come in kind of shifts and fabricate those materials, see if they're working, excuse me, and move on from there. But hoping to open in late spring, have a vibrant summer opportunity, summer camps for kids, move into the next school year and be ready to, you know, support kids in whatever ways we can, notably GIPS students, if that's a possibility. So, we'd love to be an extension for kids that may have already learned the material or are reteaching if they need more hands-on activities or the whole second grade class wants to come and have an exciting, creative experience, you know, in the museum floor, hopefully with some support curricular-wise that we could provide through our programming department, too. So, just want to say, and I want to add, too, I appreciate all the support we had. I went out last spring to the schools and talked to all the area high schools about getting kids involved and learning their opinions about Epic and how we could provide programming for all of them. What do they really want to come to Epic to do? And I was just very much impressed with all the schools, including Grand Island High School. We have, from that, we've also created a youth advisory council, and you are well represented on that youth advisory council. We have kids from area schools and city schools as well, and those kids have been very impressive. Really diverse group with eclectic needs, but the one thing that was true about them completely was they were very career-oriented and want us to serve them in a way that will help them pursue those careers. And they have been meeting with us monthly and have really been the driving source for the purpose of those south rooms that are high school, have a high school focus. And I appreciate Mr. Fisher and Mr. Hubbard both for supporting that. I think there were bribes to kids to get us, get them in the rooms to talk to me back last spring. Maybe Pizza was involved so that they would come and see us because they really knew nothing about Epic, but came in there and they've been great resources ever since. So, appreciate your kids and appreciate the opportunity to support GIPS in any way we can. So, any questions? Excuse me. No? All right.
You just want to mention the, what was the opening day? I think you mentioned it, but.
We don't have really, we can't set an opening day. Late spring, we're hoping for. And I said that would be our, maybe our opening day in totality, but we're hoping to open some aspects of our programming earlier in the spring. The museum floor won't be ready then, but hopefully those south rooms are so that we could, you know, offer those high school, upper or upper middle school kids an opportunity to come in and have some programming experiences. So, yeah. And one thing I also didn't mention, kind of our day, hopefully next school year, we have a start of a little bit of normalcy, and we're hoping that we are open, say, 9:00 AM, and we're a resource for young families that would come in with toddlers and can create a community of those, of those young families together, and they can support each other, and we can be a resource for them if they have questions about school and beginning that. Hopefully, we can provide that to them. And then, as the day moves through, we would be a resource for, you know, obviously, your field trip experiences, but hopefully even more than that and be, you know, the resource for those extensions and reteachings if GIPS felt that was needed. And then, we move into the evening where our high school and upper middle school will be there until probably about 8 o'clock. So, we're hoping to, you know, fulfill all those needs through the school day and beyond. So, anything else? Other questions?
Mr. Fisher.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that, you know, Mrs. Albers and I had the chance to tour over there a couple months ago. I'm sure it's changed dramatically since then, but I know that Mr. Mazur, when we were in conversation before, had invited, you know, our board to come over and see what's taking place over there. And so, again, that's one of those things that, you know, we could, we could do that as a board field trip, or I'm sure that if we reached out to Mr. Mazur, he could set up a time for several of you to go anytime that you wanted to.
Certainly, individually or as a group, either one, we'd be happy. Love to have you. So, as well as any staff from GIPS. So, if that interests anyone, we'd love to show them around. So, all right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Item 6.2, American Civics Bi-Yearly Report. Ms. Karakul and Mrs. Tracy Jacobowski.
Now, Ms. Mazur, I want to reiterate that you're always welcome to stay for the rest of the morning.
(laughter)
Baby back.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. I'm Karakul, and I serve as the Curriculum Coordinator for ELA and Social Studies 612. And I'm really pleased to be joined tonight by Tracy Jacobowski. Mrs. Jacobowski is our middle school principal lead for social studies. So, I'm really excited to have her here because those of you who have been on the board for a while, you've heard a lot of these, and so, now we'll have an opportunity to have something just a little bit different this evening. So, that is exciting. All right. So, the purpose of this presentation tonight, of course, is to provide you with information about how our district's social studies curriculum meets the requirements of the American civics education as outlined in Public Law 79724 and Board Policy 2230. And this is a biannual presentation, and that is one of the requirements of this law. And I always like to kind of provide just an overview of really what this law is all about. And the central focus of Nebraska PL 79724 is fostering civic competence by ensuring students gain an understanding of American history, government, and the responsibilities that come with citizenship. It emphasizes the importance of foundational principles like the Constitution, the Bill of Rights. It encourages civic engagement, and it recognizes the diverse contributions that have shaped our nation's development. One of the first requirements is that our district's social studies curriculum aligns with the adopted standards. And our current K-12 social studies curriculum is fully aligned with the 2019 Nebraska social studies standards. And that really provides the foundation for our instruction that helps students build that knowledge and skills that they need to understand American history, government, and their civic responsibilities.
So, with that, our district is committed to providing high-quality instruction. And in order to support the classroom instruction and support the learning expectations outlined in the standards, we have adopted two different high-quality, standards-aligned instructional resources. Our main resource that the teachers are using day in and day out is from TCI, and it provides really engaging and inquiry-based instruction. We had used TCI two models ago. We had a different one in the middle, and then we're back to it because we've seen the types of questions that it provides for students, the types of opportunities to really dive in and look at historical artifacts, to ask the questions and become more inquisitive with their learning. Our other piece that is in more recent adoption is called the DBQ Project, which is like data-based questioning, document-based questioning. And this is an opportunity to go alongside what our ELA is working on and focused with writing and coupling that with looking at artifacts and having students really pour into what happened in history and what they glean from that, rather than here's this version of history, here's how it went. They're looking at it and making those determinations themselves because we really want to focus on critical thinking. And the DBQ Project paired with our TCI resource really aligns with our standards and that critical thinking. Part of the law 792724 is colloquial known as the Americanism Law, and it really focuses on recognizing the services of the women and men who played that crucial role in us achieving independence and then protecting that independence. And our two classes that we have that focus on that are American history and government. Our middle school has American history in eighth grade. At our high school level, we have it at the freshman level, and then government civics as seniors. It also focuses on examining the establishment of our constitutional government and the preservation of that union, incorporates multicultural education throughout the American history courses, and instilling pride and respect for our nation's institutions. And this is, also bleeds into our econ classes at the high school. In the courses at the high school, it focuses on, and this is also at the middle school level, focusing on the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, the Constitution of Nebraska, and how that might be different with our unicameral, the structure and function of our local and state government. And this really builds on our vertical alignment from our elementary social studies where it's now you know how our government works, how can you be civically involved in that? And how, what does that look like for you as a teenager, but also as you, as you grow into adult? And applying that knowledge to their everyday life and the issues that we're seeing. This shows the part of the Americanism Law where students do a project. And for the middle school, the focus is on Abraham Lincoln within the eighth grade classes. And in the next slide, I'm going to show you what that actually looks like straight from the teachers and how they incorporate that. And our high school meets that, that project standard in freshman year. So, for our eighth grade, the students are given critical topics, and then they research and then provide a presentation based on those pieces. And so, within the framework of the Americanism Law, it says Abraham Lincoln, these are all areas that are tied to his work as president and for our country. Students are required to address four of those within their, within their projects. At the high school level, when they get to Martin Luther King, which is the prominent American that's outlined in the Americanism Law, doing a project based on topics arranged with his work and his life and his legacy. And so, different avenues of looking at voting requirements for Black Americans, looking at individual stories and what that can tell us of the life of what it was like for the average American, who was a Black American living in a world that looks very different from today. And parts of that is not only looking at the basics of the situation, but looking at its role in history as well as that impact on today. Here's another example. This one is on the Brown versus Board of Education ruling, which desegregated schools, but looking at that impact on Black educators. And today, when we look around our schools, does that still have an impact today with the diversity of our staff and how that matches the students that we have? So, it's a little bit different lens of just Martin Luther King Jr. or Abraham Lincoln. It takes a little bit deeper.
So, finally, one of the requirements of the Public Law 79724 is that we have transparency in our social studies curriculum, that it's available publicly. We meet this requirement by posting this on our district website, and it can be accessed under the curriculum and instruction link. There's all kinds of information there about our curriculum and how it really reinforces that civic education. So, in summary, this report that we shared really highlights how our district is committed to fulfilling the requirements of Nebraska Public Law 79724 and Board Policy 2230. I wanted to thank you for your time this evening, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the Civics Biannual Report.
Hello. Just wondering, so for TCI, I've seen the student side. I was just wondering on the teacher's side, how can they give like feedback into those responses that they get? Or is it usually just kind of like a completion grade that they can just kind of like, the student just answers and whatever they got, they kind of got from that? Or is it something that the teacher could give feedback on?
That's a, that's a really, that's a really great question. So, and so, I think that's, that's two parts. So, number one, asking for feedback, are you talking within the platform where the teacher might assign you a reading and there's questions, and then you just get the grade through, through the platform?
Yeah.
And that's something that we can, we can discuss with our social studies teachers because we meet with them and we can talk about the different types of feedback. And I know TCI, back in the olden days, okay, there were workbooks that teachers, that students would fill out and fill, the teachers could answer and fill back, you know, there's that communication. But online, you're right, I feel like that is maybe an area of growth for the platform of TCI online where it doesn't give a lot of opportunity for that teacher feedback. But that's something that we can take as a conversation piece because you're right, that feedback is important versus just the grade. You want to know how you're doing within it.
Yes, and I think it's very important because this is the way that they're learning since it's like almost, like it's usually their homework. So, yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. That's, we'll take that back. Because even though I support middle school, I work really closely with Mr. Hawley, the high school principal who does social studies, and we work together to provide that professional learning for teachers. So, thank you.
Good question. All right. Thank you, ladies. Moving on to item 6.3, the GIPS Leader Fellowship. Hope.
Can we do this? But I think the students.
Yes, we can. All right. We're going to revert back to our special recognition, starting with item 4.1, the 2025 GISH All-State Musicians presented by Mr. Ladwig, Dr. Lee, Mr. Labrie, and Ms. Bloom. All right. Good evening. Come on, keep piling in. Let's go. They're so excited, as you can tell. I'm going to have Dr. Lee come up and talk about all-state music, the all-state music information, and then we'll go ahead and talk about all the good stuff with cross-country as well. So, Dr. Lee and Mrs. Bloom will come up and chat, and we'll go from there.
All right.
Come on in.
All right. Good evening. Good to see you all. And this is, this is always a wonderful thing to celebrate, our students' successes within, within everything they do with, with our school system. to celebrate, our students' successes within everything they do with our school system. So just a little bit about who you're looking at right now. These are most of our 14 all-state selected students for the Nebraska All-State, which is happening next week from November 20th through the 22nd. Just a little background on all-state and the process. This is a fully auditioned group, which is a selection of ninth through 12th graders within choir, band, orchestra, jazz band, across the state, across the state. So it's the best of the best in the state. It's the most prestigious honor band, honor choir, honor ensemble system that we have in the state right now. And as far as the number of students selected across the state of the thousands that audition, my recollection, I don't know the stats for this year, but it's usually around 2,000 to 2,500 kids audition for this. And of that, they select just a little over 800. The groups that they're involved in, if they're in the band or orchestra, it's usually around 160 people in those ensembles. And the choir is a choir of 440 voices. So it's pretty prestigious, one out of three, and depending on the section that they're in too. But it's a pretty prestigious honor to be part of that. So with that, I wanted to introduce the instrumentalists that were selected, and then Ms. Bloom will introduce the vocalists as well. We have Paige Burgland on bassoon. She is in the orchestra, and this is her third year. And I also want to stress that being selected year after year is also a very difficult thing to accomplish because of the competition that's involved here. But Paige Burgland on bassoon, this is her third year. Missing tonight because she had other commitments, I think she's doing a college class right now, is Gabby Meyer on harp. And this is also Gabby's third year. And then Caitlin Sudamka on horn is going to be in the band. And Caitlin has made all-state all four years of her high school career, which is an amazing feat. So that's the instrumentalists. I'll turn it over to Ms. Bloom for the vocalists.
The vocalist that were selected was sophomore Natalie Flores. She's a soprano I. Kayden Skidcombe, she is a junior, and this is her second year at all-state. She's a soprano II. Katie Johnson, this is also her second year at all-state. She's a senior soprano II. Malia McNeil, junior, first-year All-Stater soprano II. Reagan Court, senior, first-year All-Stater alto II. Isabella Rowe, senior, first-year All-Stater alto II. Madison Wazork, sophomore, first-year All-Stater alto II. Ulysses Acosta, he is a junior, second-year, no, first-year All-Stater, sorry. First-year All-Stater tenor I. Cohen Thorpe, tenor II. He is a sophomore, first-year All-Stater. Elijah Meyer-Wares, senior, second-year All-Stater bass I. And Cale Weigert, second-year All-Stater bass I, senior. So we also have two students who were selected as the top two voice part, in their voice part within our region. There are 10 regions throughout the state, and so within our region, they were the top two within their voice part, and they were able to audition for solos. And those were Madison Wazork and Elijah Meyer-Wares.
All right. If we could, we'd love to get a group photo with everyone up here. And educators, you're welcome to jump.
Yeah, he's got to hand out.
These big groups are always hard to figure out how we're going to hand out these certificates. So we'll start over.
Oh, you want me to just name, or, no, you got it.
Because otherwise, my certificates are in the wrong order.
Perfect. Go ahead.
So we will start with Paige, and we'll give her a certificate. Congrats. Janet? Catherine? Reagan? Lea? Gabby?
Gabby's down there.
Elijah? Isabelle? Dawn? Madison? Cale? All right. Ulysses? Okay. I think that was everyone. Everyone get one?
Everybody's got one.
Now we can do pictures. Did you have something else you wanted to say?
No, no. Just that we're super proud of these kids, and they represent us so well at the state level.
So Mr. Holinsky?
Yeah. You're up, man. All right. Let's group in and do a couple of rows if we need to. Yeah, find a window. All right. Everyone smile. We're going to take a bunch. All right. All right. Keep holding it so all the parents can get photos too.
You know, I really like November meeting. I put it in my calendar early because I know November, March, and June. I guarantee I'm going to step my foot in this room because I always have good things to talk about our kids because there's always some good things. And so to back up on what Dr. Lee and Ms. Bloom has already talked about, I'm going to touch on a little bit accomplishment from Katie Johnson for cross-country. She did a great job this year, along with both of our boys and girls teams. I've been very proud of them. And I will say that Coach Roach, Coach Osaveto, and Coach Fife have done a great job with our squad this year. She received a medal in every event that she competed in, except for the Augustana Twilight Meet. And at that meet, there was 414 runners, and she finished 45th out of those 414 runners. She also set a school record that she beat of her own at that meet with a time of 1858.77. She finished fifth at conference, fourth at districts, and as we all know, 15th at the state meet. Katie ran a course record, or course PR for herself, of a 1933.2. That's the fastest 5K time at the state meet in school history, and it earned the first medal for a cross-country runner since 2005 at Grand Allen Senior High. So she is also a three-time state cross-country qualifier. Because I don't want to steal all of her light, I'm going to have her come talk about what she's going to do next year, because I'm not surprised she's going to be running as well. So Katie, I know you didn't want to talk, but here you go.
Okay, so I'm sure you've heard of Katie. And next year, I'll be running in the fall. I'll be running at Concordia University in cross-country and track.
Mr. Fisher, you got a little certificate there for her. We'll take a picture. And coaches, come on up. You guys can take a picture well as well.
Yeah, Fife is middle school basketball tonight, so.
All right. There we go. Smile. All right, hold it for parent.
All right. Jumping back up to item 6.3, GIPS Leader Fellowship, presented by Ms. Jessica Myers.
Sorry. I was going to make fun of Mitch if it didn't work. I don't know why. Hi, I'm Jessica Myers. I'm the assistant principal at Bar Middle School, currently working with our eighth-grade class, and excited to be here. Today, I'm talking about our GIPS Leader Fellowship. And you may be familiar with the GIPS Educator Fellowship. So we are building on, and we want to build leaders from our teachers into leadership roles. So I'm going to kind of talk on that and what vision we're going to go for. So here are the people that met. I was just the one that said, yeah, I love talking in front of people. Let me do that. So this is everyone that got together. If you notice, we got together a very short amount of time and have accomplished a lot. So I'm really proud of what we've done, and I'm really excited of where we're going. What we would like to do is we like to build leaders of all kinds of capacities. So we're talking about our PLC facilitators, academic support coaches, positive support coaches, athletic directors, administrators. There's so many different kinds of leaders that we need at our schools. And what we'd like to do is build capacity so we can have smooth transitions into those leadership positions. So we're not looking just administrators, but we're looking at anything that all of our buildings need. And speaking of someone that's in those buildings, I'm always looking like, who's next? Who's next? Who wants this stuff? So this is where we're kind of going. But just as a reminder, just coming back to our hiring practices, it's not guaranteeing a spot or a position. We want our best candidates, whether that be within district or out of district. But we want to prepare everyone in district as much as possible. I want to be thinking, oh, I know who would be great. That's what I'm passionate about. What does that look like? So it looks at, or, so overall, these are all the outcomes we are really, really looking for. I've kind of touched on them, but one thing that I again want to talk about is just that smooth transition into leadership positions and maintaining stability. That's really what we're about. I know coming in from out of district, that can be difficult. That can be really challenging, and it's nice to know that we have people ready to go. Couple of things that we would talk about for our fellowship, what it would look like. You would have a fellowship team that would lead and facilitate, and that would be made up of administrators and L4L coordinators. And then from there, the facilitators would be selected by current leaders of like chief of human capital, chief of elementary, or associate superintendent. They would pick out the facilitators who would apply for it. The facilitators would each receive a thousand-dollar stipend for all their prep and work. And then the members in the fellowship would be voluntary, application-based, and we were thinking up to 12 staff members. Sustainability, what we're looking at for the vision is that we would like this to be every year. We would like to have a new cohort of teachers that are excited about things going on. And really, what we want them to do is be able to identify their skills and transfer those skills into things that are passionate about GIPS and be able to lead new initiatives that we're doing. The other thing is just building community, talking to each other, creating voice. I know how hard that can be, jumping in in new schools, and just a way that we can build interconnectionness. So what do the next steps look like? Well, right now, we're deciding what does that application process look like. We're developing that as a group. We have another meeting coming up to work on that. And what we would like to do is look out for facilitators in January and announce who we select in February, and then applications for people in the fellowship in March, announce those in May, and start a cohort in August. That would be our dream. So I'm ending on a quote because I had a great leader share it with me, and I loved it so much. But leadership is not a journey to rise in ranks, but to help those rise around us. So any questions? I would love to do my best to answer them, or pass it on to someone that makes more money than me. I don't know. Either one.
This is Albers.
How are you going to get the word out to teachers in the district to get them in, get the interest?
Yeah, so we want to start putting it, first, we want to talk about things that we're missing, things that we can build on. And then we're going to share it out in our newsletter, share it out with our leaders first, and make sure that we have leaders, and then have them share it in their buildings. Yeah.
You might have mentioned, and you're looking at a meeting like a monthly or more, is it a setup?
Yeah, for the fellowship.
What's the schedule look like?
Yeah, so the fellowship, we want to do some, I know a lot of stuff happens in the summer, so we want to invite them into summer planning and what that looks like for school years. And then during plan and prep time, a few times after school, maybe some Zoom sessions, and kind of build the cohort around where the interest lies too and their skill set. So I kind of want to individualize things for people that are interested. Especially if you're interested in coaching, let's talk about coaching. Let's do that. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Awesome. It worked though, so gosh darn it. Thank you.
Item 6.4, Nutrition Services Update, Mr. Oscar Garcia.
Thank you, board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here again. Just wanted to give you guys some updates on how nutrition services, how we've been operating, the students we've been serving, and changes that we've been making. So first of all, we're going to get into our student engagement and meal participation so far for the year. Meals so far, served so far, August through October, we've had about 150,000 breakfasts, 350,000 lunch, after-school snacks, 83. Total meals and snacks served from August to the end of October is half a million. So we're trending in the right direction, serving our people, that's with our students, in the first 52 days of school. So the meals already served is 500,000. Projected remaining meals, about 1.1 million. Projected total for the school year is 1.6 million. So last year's total meals served was 1.6 million as well. So we do expect to have a slight increase, but we're staying on our projected slightly increase for the year. Impact of our students for the meals we serve is a high participation equals strong student engagement, improved attendance and focus, more consistent behavior, fewer nurse visits, students trust and choose our program daily. So participation remains strong and stable across all buildings. Basically, CEP is continuing to support equitable access to meals. We expect to finish the year aligned with or above our last year's totals. So CEP is working. We're still seeing, last year, we had an increase in our meals served over the prior year before we were district-wide CEP. And this year, even with a slight dip in enrollment, less than 1%, we're still expecting to see an increase in our meals served. So that means that people are taking the meals that we're serving. We're reaching our students every day. Other just topics of discussion, last time I was here and I spoke to the board, we talked about our financial situation, where we were at with the depleting reserves and how we were sitting in the health of the department. And so I wanted to update the board on some things that have been happening in our financial health. So some of the improvements that we've made since I last addressed the board was tracking our cost and meal labor hours. So we also have been maximizing our USDA commodities pass-through value, monitoring our waste and trends, and then implementing improvements on a site-per-site savings goal. So So something else that hasn't, that isn't listed in here where we improved upon is we took all our CEP numbers. The way CEP works is we group schools together and by their identified student percentage. So one of the things that we did is initially when we came full district CEP, we used the guidance of No Kid Hungry and they helped us reach that finish line to be able to run all our schools as district-wide CEP. Since having our first initial year under our belt, we're able to see where our finances have been and whether we can regroup and reclassify schools in CEP group settings. And that, some of that work was done this summer. So as such, regrouping our schools, which has no effect on the students we serve, we've been able to maximize our reimbursements by about 100 to 130,000 dollars this year. So that's another savings improvement we made in Nutrition Services. So what I want to talk about is the current spending model on how Nutrition Services operates. So Nutrition Services, you know, we operate on, I don't want to say razor-thin margins, but by no means are we raking in the money. So most Nebraska school districts, their target is, out of all their revenues, is 40 to 43% labor, 40 to 43% food costs and other costs is 10% or lower. But in the other costs, you have everything from supplies, chemicals, repairs and maintenance. So it's kind of known as a 40-40-10 rule. And then the rest of the excess is supposed to go in the reserves for Nutrition Services. Nutrition Services' goal is to always have three months of operating funds or expense, you know, at our disposal. And that's for, you know, if funding were to stop for whatever reason or be interrupted or any major improvements or equipment purchases, we always want to have at least three months operating expenses. Another thing to note is districts that are run as full CEP usually run higher on labor but lower on food costs due to economies of scale, more meals we serve, more we buy, more we can bargain for. This is GIPS's current, I just took a snapshot of the month of September. So you see, we're almost at the goal, but we still have some work to do. So our food costs are about 45% of our margin, our revenue, our labor costs at 41 and a half percent. Other miscellaneous, we're above 10% and our surplus is at 2.8%. So the good news is, we're in the black. We're making money. We put down for the month of September, we put down a surplus. Now, mind you, this surplus isn't including anything like à la carte sales, caterings that we've been doing in the district or even teachers and staff members that are eating with us. That's an extra added surplus that, this is strictly lunch, breakfast and after-school snack. So we're trending in the right direction, including all of that other, all those other sales that we've had on the side. Apart from our lunch program, our surplus is well above a 2.8% for the month of September. So continue to work on that. We want to, moving forward, we want to continue to look at our food costs and bring that down to a more manageable level. We also want to work on our miscellaneous other expenses. And that's a tricky one because a big portion of our expenses in the miscellaneous is tracked to maintenance and repair of aging equipment. So as Nutrition Services begins to build up our surplus, one of our projects and goals that we have is to start reinvesting some of that money into our equipment to bring our maintenance down. For example, in the month of October, we've had about 16 to 18,000 dollars just in repairs alone for refrigeration units. So I mean, our systems are aging, they need replaced and we're on the right track to start getting the money and the funds to start replacing a lot of these things across the district. Our target spending would be to bring our food costs down to 42%, bring our labor down to 40%, our other miscellaneous down to seven and a half and to start having every month a surplus of 10% or more. So the way we're gonna achieve that, as I said, you know, swapping out equipment as we can would lower our other costs. In the food costs, something interesting happened. As we started examining our purchases that we've made for Nutrition Services, we noted a lot of inconsistencies in our billings from our vendors and our USDA credits and commodities applied. So that triggered us to start doing daily, weekly audits. And as such, Nutrition Services internally, we have discovered about 35 to 40,000 dollars that haven't been applied in credits to our food purchasing. So when you see the fact that our food costs are 45%, that's not including the incoming credits that are gonna lower that down. So, you know, we're working with our partners, our vendors, and to start getting our correct entitlements and commodities applied because that lowers our food costs. So that's how we're gonna continue to work on that. Labor, labor is a tricky one. The goal isn't to reduce our staffing or reduce our labor. The goal is labor as a percentage to sales. So if we can continue to increase participation, continue to serve more breakfast, I would say the two areas we need the most improvement upon district-wide would be more breakfast participation and more schools that can qualify for after-school snacks that are running after-school programs are participating in that. Currently, right now, we only have two schools that are participating in after-school programming. I can say the vast majority, but maybe one or two of our schools qualify for after-school snacks. So that's untapped money that not being used across the district. So that'd be another push to increase our participation. As I stated, our regular audits found through August to October, 35 to 40,000 dollars that haven't been applied consistently. Food waste, regular monitoring and production versus participation. One of the biggest things that we would do at a lot of our schools is overproduce and have a lot of food waste. We've been working on streamlining that. This is done pretty effectively at the elementary level. So this is more emphasis on our secondary schools, provide more training and for our secondary managers so we can just prepare more food without the risk of running out, of course. Future CEP. So, so far I've shared all good news, but there, you know, all good things must come to an end. As of right now, our expected exit date for CEP would be school year 28-29. That's assuming all things stay consistent with inflation and we can keep our food costs down. Our exit date is that school year 28-29 because that's when our certification runs out and we have to reapply for CEP again. And how that is determined is based on our identified student percentage of state-certified students, which would be from SNAP, Medicaid, different, you know, foster care migrant. As such, I do not see us trending and to have the numbers to be able to qualify for full district CEP come 28-29. By then, we're gonna have to start looking at qualifying schools on an individual basis as opposed to CEP district-wide. I bring that up just now to start sounding the alarm so people are aware of what is coming. 28-29 school year seems like a long ways away, but we'll be surprised how quick it gets here. So unless some major laws change, that's our expected out date. In preparation of exiting district-wide CEP, we need to start looking at raising our prices to an adequate level. We haven't raised our prices, I believe, maybe since 22-23 or 20, or school year 23, somewhere around that range. So even though all students are eating free now, one of the things I bring to the Board is to raise the school meals 10 cents this year. Again, that has no bearing on any of the students. And we continue to examine how the economy is and how much meals are costing us. Every year at the beginning of the school year, I'm required to do a paid lunch equity. And I just look at what the meals are costing, what our reimbursement rate is, what our ISP rate is across the district. And we come across, you know, whether we need to raise our prices or stay consistent or stay the course. So this year we raised it 10 cents. Next year, we need to look at what the possible raise would be for next year. And I mean, ideally, I would only like to raise it 10 cents a school year until we come off of CEP in 2028. But I can't predict the future and how the economy will be. It might necessitate next year we raise it more or next year we raise it less. But currently, as we stand, if we were to lose CEP right now, I do not think that, which we're not, I do not think that we're adequately priced to sustain the program. Even if you look at Northwest, they're priced about 20 cents more per meal than we are. So we need to start looking at just what our prices are gonna be. Now, the USDA does give guidelines. While we can raise our price to, so to get ourselves solvent, to make sure that we're not running at a deficit, the USDA usually doesn't like us to raise a dramatic wanting raise per year. So that's why it's gonna be done in increments until we're at school year 28, 2028. So proposed meal prices would be elementary lunch, 290, middle school lunch, 310, high school lunch, 320, all breakfast, 235. So all I did there was just add 10 cents to our current price that we had last in the school year 23. So it's not that much of an increase, but that's the game plan moving forward. Does anyone have any questions?
Mrs. Albers.
Thank you, Oscar. I always appreciate your presentations. And those numbers are kind of mind-numbing, the number of meals that you're serving. Just when you really see it on the screen, it's, but good job on that. And I was curious if you had any ideas for how to increase the number of breakfasts or snacks? I know snacks is kind of dictated by the number of after-school programs, hint, hint, so maybe we need some of those. But, but what about breakfast? Do you have any ideas of how to increase that?
Breakfast, it's difficult, you know. I think this year, some sites, we've seen decreases in breakfast due to more student, maybe tardies in certain locations. We've also seen decreases in enrollment in some schools. That's where we're seeing our most decreases. But we have had major wins. Sometimes it's, honestly, it's an anomaly that we can't figure out. For perfect example, Howard Elementary School, one of our biggest schools, elementary, their lunch participation is phenomenal. Historically, their breakfast participation has never been what it should be. Now, we've looked at every which way we can to scratch our head and figure it out. But, you know, sometimes it's just the way things are. Other times, I think maybe even getting student feedback on what meal preferences would be, you know, maybe we need to start listening to the students a little more. I know sometimes if we ask them what they want, it would look more like donuts every day. But maybe Nutrition Services needs to budget a little and meet the kids halfway somewhere, you know. I think in terms of after-school snacks, I think just having the, you know, communicating, for me, communicating this to the district leadership team, they'll definitely get the word out to administrators because I know that there's, and it's the beginning of the school year still too. A lot of after-school programs haven't started yet. But, you know, it's, I really would push on the administrators to consider after-school snacks as an option to buying snacks on their own and, you know, providing it for the students.
So, and you can't just like hand out granola bars as they're going out the door to go home. It has to be, it has to be with a school activity.
It has to be with the school activity. That's not an organized sport, like intermural sport. And then it can't just, it can't, it cannot be an extension of education. So something like Homer Club would work. But in this weird hypothetical situation, if a teacher wanted to keep her students afterwards to continue to teach them social studies, then that wouldn't work. But if it was for like a Homer Club, even video game club, you'd be surprised. We've had some amazing programs like Jefferson, you know, has Jensen Gems that teach basic manners of students and, you know, etiquette and it's amazing programs that we have across the district. We have schools like West Lawn who have running clubs and different, and so, you know, these are, these are the schools that are currently taking advantage of our after-school snacks. But we, you know, when I first started, we did see a bigger participation in after-school snacks than we are seeing now. And that was before we were pretty much district-wide certified, you know, for CEP.
Has there been any look at the correlation between tardiness or absenteeism and the number of breakfasts being served? I mean, is, or even just getting the information to the parents? Are the parents aware that breakfast is being served?
I know that at one such school, an administrator did get the word out to the parents like, hey, you know, if you're bringing your students late, this might risk them getting breakfast, like we need them in the doors, you know. And so I know that some principals are well aware of that. And I have seen in one case where they're being proactive and, and at least one administrator has told me that they think the correlation between their breakfast numbers dropping has a little to do with students arriving on time.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Parsantis.
So, just a couple of things. That's a reminder. For the older equipment and materials, you have your own budget, right? It's, that's been how it's been in the past, still the same today, okay. And one time I ran into Oscar at Super Saver, my boy asked me who he was. I told him he's the one in charge of the menu. They would love to talk to you.
I bet.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wilson.
You know, we have done surveys at some of the schools. We didn't do one this year or maybe it was two years ago. And when we look at some, some of the answers are very, you know, thoughtful and well thought out. Other, the answers are bring in Papa John's and McDonald's, you know.
I was just wondering if you've seen a correlation in the time change at the middle school being earlier? If that could be why maybe there's less breakfast at the middle school level?
That was brought up to me and just, just this week and I haven't had time to really consider it. But I think that's a very good question and I, you know, you know, yeah, I hadn't even considered that until someone, one of my team members brought it up to me this week and I was like, wow, I hadn't even considered that. But maybe, but definitively, I don't know. I can't say.
Great report. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
Item six point five, accept and place on file the audit report for fiscal year 24-25, Mr. Virgil Harden.
Well, good evening. Doesn't Oscar just do an awesome job of advocating for his program? And I'm second on the motion for the donuts every day for breakfast. Just wanted to get that in the public record, so thank you. So, good news is, we have an audit report on a timely basis for the 24-25 school year. If you remember, year prior, we had an auditor all lined up. They kind of bowed out at the last minute. We couldn't, couldn't get it done in time. So we got some exceptions and got that done in January of this year. So that's in the past. This is the 24-25 audit report. It is attached to your Board packet and you can follow along. I have maybe two, three hours worth of details that I want to go through. Well, not quite that bad. So, most importantly, page one, second paragraph down. "In our opinion, the accompanying basic financial statements present fairly. In all material respects, the respective modified cash basis, financial position of the government activities," and so on and so forth. I'm gonna read the whole paragraph to you. That is indeed what we call an unqualified audit report and that is what you should demand as a Board of Education that you get in an audit report. And every year I've been involved, that's what we've had. So just a few comments on some other pages. If you want to follow along, that'd be awesome. If you scroll down all the way to page five and six, you get into the financial statements and the numbers. Don't want to go over the numbers with you in detail unless you have questions. But what I'll tell you is we have that modified cash basis. And so last year, the audit report was done just on cash basis. This is a modified cash basis. Some, a key difference then is really that we capture the capital assets and the depreciation that the district does. And that's important when we go to do financing and the bond, bonding companies, investors want to know, are we investing in our district or are we withdrawing capital from our district by the amount of dollars that we're putting in? And without that modified cash basis, that information is not on that financial. So we walked away from that a few years ago and we're bringing that back. So just, there is a modified basis from years prior. I do want to note on page, let's see, note 7B, so I'm going to the notes. So we're scrolling down. Page 25, 7B, compensated abstances. So there's a new audit requirement for government agencies where we have to show when employees leave our employment or are entitled to benefits post-employment. We are, as all school districts in the state, required to pay out vacation to our staff upon their termination. If they have five days or whatever their days are, if they haven't used them, we have to pay them their value. So what this information in this note is saying is if at August 31st, 2025, every employee that was entitled to sick leave based on their balance of that date, we would have had that one point, just short of 1.4 million dollar. Uh, every employee that was entitled to sick leave, uh, based on their balance of that date, uh, we would have had that one point, just short of one point four million dollar liability. And then not every district, but Grand Island uh does pay out some sick leave upon retirement, negotiated in agreement. And so staff members that have had a certain number of years of service can get up to twenty five hundred dollars of money. And so the amount of uh money that we would have to pay if every single person would have retired with that benefit was that nine hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. So that's new information and that's just an important thing for you to know. Um, we, you know, obviously not every person that's entitled to that benefit at that point in time would ever really obviously leave. And uh, but it's important to know that we have that liability anyhow on our financials that was not there before. So um, I mentioned the capital asset, uh, that's on page uh. Sorry, it's on note eight, so a couple of pages down. Uh, you'll note the capital assets listed there. So that's a brand new note that was not there the last few years. And so that's uh, shows you how many dollars we have invested, how much we invested in versus disposals. Um, we'll talk a little bit more about that whole process here in a bit. Uh, do you want to report on page forty two? Uh, they're reporting on compliance and internal controls over financial reporting. They've had no material weakness in internal controls to report. We did have then um, a material weakness in internal controls on our internal controls for capital uh uh assets. And that really is involved with all the projects that we did with the CARES Act money. That um, projects uh weren't processed in a way where we could easily go back at this time. The audit requirements basically say they have to go back two years because they weren't audited. So they have to pick them up and add them to the audit report. They have to go back a number of years. And so. Issue is we just didn't have our data in as perfect condition as what I had hoped we had. And so they called us and said, do better, and so we will, so. And there is a sheet, another attachment to the audit report that is my response, that basically says in a couple of sentences. We agree totally with you and we're going to do the recommendations that you pointed out on page, I think it's forty seven or something like that kind of thing. So uh, one material weakness, I guess it's on page forty four. Only other thing is the federal program, uh, audits are required to give us a statement on federal programs. They cannot legally do that at this point in time because the federal government, for some small reason, hasn't issued uh the official guidance. They've done preliminary guidance, uh, official guidance is not out, so that will be forthcoming. I do want to mention that they had three major programs that they audited in full, Title One, IDE, IDEA, and the GEAR Up Program. So they audited those like they would have anything uh on the regular uh financials. So with that, I would conclude my comments on the audit report and happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Harden.
Thank you very much.
Item six point six, Neil Administration Building Parking Lot Renovation, renovation, Mr. Dan Patch.
Thank you. Um, so uh, we went up for proposal uh last month uh to do a replacement of this parking lot. Something that we've been planning and trying to do for quite a few years. This will be on our twenty twenty six project list, just an FYI. Um, I'm hoping you'll see that uh this next month. One of the reasons we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves here a little bit is simply uh to get a contractor lined up before they um commit to other big projects. Because this is a big project and we're estimating around a one point three million dollars. And um, actually, I'm pretty, pretty happy to see where some of the numbers came in. I thought we had a pretty good response. We had four bidders. You should see on the attachment there on the screen. Um, there was a little bit of a range, although you know, three out of those four were really close uh together. Um, with uh diamond engineering being at uh nine hundred ninety nine thousand, one hundred thirty seven dollars and forty five cents. Uh, there's an alternate on there as well. So in in Nebraska, especially Grand Island, sometimes you have soil issues. And so this alternate would be to uh, if we do come across bad soils, to do an over excavation, go down approximately two foot. Bring in suitable soil and come back so that our subgrade is in good shape. If you don't do something like that, you just go on not a good subgrade, then you end up with replacing your parking lot a lot sooner. We don't want to do that. We want to do it one time because this is going to really uh be a little destructive. And it's going to cause some angst and uh disrupt uh our traffic for this building. It'll probably disrupt one or two board meetings. We might be coming in a different door. We'll work on that plan once we have a contractor selected, approved and under contract. And we'll, we'll make a plan on how we'll, we'll phase this out. But I can tell you that it's, it's a big thing. It's not just uh putting in, replacing the, the parking lot itself. It's also adding some storm drainage, so it drains better. Uh, there's some sanitary involved in it as well. But uh, this is the time for us to go ahead and move forward with it. So I was going to do information uh now and then also action later on tonight. So we are recommending to go ahead and move forward with diamond engineering uh for our contractor. That alternate won't come into play until later on, which would end up being a change order. But it's better having that, knowing what your change order is going to be ahead of time. So it's kind of competitive and it uh kind of gives you peace of mind so that you don't get tore up really bad later on when you're having to do that rework. If that is the case, which I'm going to tell you that more than likely what I've seen with this parking lot, that will be the case. So unless you guys want to keep the parking lot the way it is, I mean, it's it's pretty rough. So uh, we had these drawings done back in twenty thirteen, actually, and so we blew the dust off of them. We're, you know, you had moved forward hopefully uh with it here this, starting this spring and doing it this summer. So with that, I'll conclude my reports and or and answering questions you might have.
What's the projected lifespan on the new parking lot?
Oh, I'd give it at least fifty years plus asphalt, twenty. And we've had this one for more than that and we've been patching it, so you know. Couple of advantages uh with with concrete. Number one, it's going to drain better. We don't have to do annual maintenance. We do spend money every year patching what we have. Uh, but one thing you would notice after a board meeting like tonight when it's dark out, that that lighter color, it's going to light that parking lot up and make it safer to walk through, so. Great question.
Thank you, Mr. Patch.
Alright, thanks.
Moving on to policy, uh, item six point seven point one, policy sixty five, ten, certified staff assignments and transfers, Mr. Matt Fisher.
Alright, the good news is we're not going to have to spend a lot of time on policy tonight. This policy sixty five, ten on certified staff assignments and transfers. I'm pulling this policy up just to uh show you what we are dealing with, with all the policies that are here tonight. Um, this is the one that has the most significant changes to it because we are changing uh that Executive Director of Human Services to the Chief of Human Capital Management. Uh, other than that, everything else that is in these policies tonight are thes or adding something like we did there. Where it said Grand Island Public and Schools was not on there before, so um, we're adding schools there. So those are the type of changes that are contained in all of those policies that are listed there um as information tonight. So unless someone wants to see a particular policy, um, I don't believe there's any reason for us to go through those. Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. So moving on then to item seven point one, GIA request for recognition for twenty seven, twenty eight school year, Dr. Carrie Kohler.
Just to review, this is a request from the Grand Island Education Association to continue to represent um as the exclusive bargaining agent for the twenty twenty seven, twenty eight contract year.
Make a motion to approve the GIA request for recognition for the twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Barcenas, seconded by Mrs. Albers. Any questions or discussion? You may proceed to a vote. Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Kohler. Item seven point two, accept and place on file the audit report for uh FY twenty four, twenty five, Mr. Harden.
Few minutes ago, presented you the audit report information. I will mention that you never approve an audit report. You accept it and place it on file as the title of the agenda item mentioned. So that's my only comment and I stand ready to answer any questions.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to accept and place on file the audit report for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
Motion by Mr. Barcenas, seconded by Mrs. Albers? By Donna. Uh, questions or discussion? Can proceed to a vote. Motion passes. Item seven point three, Neil Administration Building Parking Lot Renovation, Mr. Patch.
Any questions since I left?
I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the the building, oh my goodness, the Neil Administration Building Parking Lot renovation as presented. There you go.
They think we, go ahead and read that out, Carlos, if you would.
Mine wasn't updating, but here it is now. Hold on. That's why I'm like, where did it go? Where did it go? There you go. Thank you. The recommendation, I make the recommendation to approve the lowest base proposal of nine hundred ninety nine thousand, one hundred thirty seven dollars and forty five cents received from the diamond engineering. With an optional alternate cost of an additional one hundred ninety three thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. The alternate will be decided and included after the project has begun and the area has been assessed for the need. The proposal will be funded through any available resources and has projec- a projected completion date of August third, twenty twenty six.
Motion by Mr. Barcenas, seconded by Mrs. Wilson. Couldn't proceed to a vote. Is there any discussion? I didn't think so.
It says the proposal will be funded through any available resources? Is Virgil going to write a check?
I believe that Albers Family Foundation is helping. And we, we worded it that way because um, you know, there's a, a lot of choices. We can pay for it out of the special building fund. We can pay for it out of depreciation fund. We can pay for it out of the general fund. All of those are legitimate uh sources of, and so because there's other things moving about uh with our finances, we don't know where we'll land. And so it's best that we don't say a specific fund because then I'd have to have you come back and do a, a motion to change it if I needed to change it in the last hour, August thirty first, twenty twenty six, and I don't want to have you do that. So that'll probably be the language you'll see on almost all the funding things moving forward. So great question. Thanks for being aware and asking it. I appreciate it.
Any further discussion? You proceed to a vote. Motion passes. Item seven point four, budget calendar, fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven, Mr. Harden.
Last month, I presented the budget calendar. I already made some uh changes based on things that came earlier. And I'm sure we'll make changes and edits. There's a little note at the bottom that says we get to do that. So even though you officially approve it, it's subject to changes as our environment changes. So we'll continue to use that as a benchmark.
Mrs. Albers.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget calendar for the fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven as presented.
Motion by Mrs. Albers, seconded by Mrs. Douglas. Any discussion? You proceed to a vote. Motion passes. Item seven point five, policy sixty four, sixty, termination of employment for certified staff, Mr. Matt Fisher.
Okay, um, there were two policies that the policy committee felt like had significant enough changes that they uh should be reviewed again with the full board rather than going through the consent agenda. And uh, this policy on termination of employment was one of those. Um, as we scroll down this policy, um, there was a section that referenced um cancellation of midterm uh amendment to uh contract or cancellation. The procedure is exactly the same, whether it's in the middle of the year or it's at the end of the year. So again, adjustments were made around that. And then there was some repetitiveness in the uh items that were listed there as well as some of the things being more procedural than policy. So there were a number of pieces in this policy that uh were being proposed to be struck from the policy. So questions around that?
Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy sixty four, sixty, termination of employment for certified staff as presented.
Motion by Mrs. Albers, seconded by Mrs. Wilson. Any discussion? You proceed to a vote. Motion passes.
So policy seventy five, fifty one, um, previously was the Grand Island online policy for credit recovery. Uh, we're basically using asynchronous learning or online learning for many more things other than uh credit recovery now. And so really what this policy change does is it aligns the policy with the way we are using online for much more than than that credit recovery that that it was uh originally set up for in this policy. So that's what the changes are. Again, quite a few places where uh language is struck. And then there are some areas where uh different language was added. So questions on that?
Not a question, just a comment. From three thirty to four o'clock, I practiced that word asynchronous, so I would not mess it up tonight. I just wanted to make sure y'all knew I could say it because it took thirty minutes of practice to get that one down.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? I entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy seventy five, fifty one, secondary asic- asynic.
He fell off the spot.
Asynchronous learning policy as presented. You, it just flew right off.
Motion by Mrs. Albers, seconded by Mr. Barcenas. No discussion, we can proceed to a vote. Motion passes. I'm just glad it worked out like that. Honestly, that was so funny. Item eight point one, Grand Island Public Schools Foundation Report, Mrs. Albers.
The Foundation Board approved seven classroom grants totaling nine thousand, fifty nine dollars. They will be surprising the winning teachers on October twenty eighth. These grants will impact two thousand, three hundred and eighty five students. The GIPS Foundation will be offering a scholarship fair for area senior students and parents at Grand Island Senior High on December third. There will be a presentation um on the Grand Island Public Schools Foundation Scholarship Applications, plus presentations on FAFSA, booths for students and parents to visit. Numerous college partners have agreed to attend. In addition, Education Quest and GISH Academy Principals and Counselors will be present to answer questions. The Foundation's College Scholarship Online Application will open on December first, twenty twenty five and is accessible at our website, GIPsfoundation.org. The GIPS Foundation will be offering over two hundred scholarships to the class of twenty twenty six that will exceed seven hundred thousand dollars. The GIPS Foundation thanks all the supporters and attendees of the twenty twenty five Harvest Event. It was record, it was a record breaking success. The event honored Ron and Dan Eeks with the Heart of the Foundation Award. Brian Lavander was the Mission Moment Speaker, sharing his story of success and determination through the support of mentors and GIPS teachers. The Foundation Board will have the following business before them at its November eighteenth, twenty twenty five meeting. Fiscal year twenty twenty five audit, fiscal year twenty twenty five nine ninety, scholarship preparation and new member nominations. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Albers. Item eight point two, Student Representative Report, Ms. Catherine Shakara Ramos.
Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to start off by presenting the highlights of the twenty twenty five fall activities. Shrek the Musical was presented on October thirty first, November first and November second. All the amazing talents were able to come together and deliver a beautiful show. The orchestra and band, um, both Philharmonic and Camerata Orchestra had that concert yesterday. Some um band members joined on stage. Um, the dance team opened the show at the Annual Dancers Against Cancer for Grace Cancer Foundation. The team will also be hosting a father daughter dance party on November twenty second. Um, congrats to senior Katie Johnson, who placed fifteenth at State Girls Cross Country. As well, Boys Cross Country earned a state top ten finish. earned a state top ten finish overall. For our student council, junior Natalia Iglesias was elected to serve at, at the state level as vice president for the Student Council of Nebraska, as well as Addison Miller will also be serving as regional president. Our senior class officers will be attending a state Board of Education conference to share their experiences with the implemented phone policy. Our skills USA leaders and members attended Mid-America where they got to the opportunity to develop their leadership and learn ways to improve the program at their local chapter. Some events around GIPS, Mr. Casperson was the, was named the twenty-two, five Nebraska PE Teacher of the Year by the Nebraska Society of Health and Physical Educators. With the twenty-four-year career, he is one of the longest-serving PE teachers in our district. Shoemakers hosted their annual literary pumpkin parade, encouraging kids to read and paint pumpkins based on characters from a book they've read. The O'Connor Learning Center hosted a Dads and Kids Reading Night, where students and families had the opportunity to act the classic from head to toe story. Project Search interns hosted their annual disability awareness fair, where through activities and research, they informed our community members on what it's like facing certain challenges. Lastly, the Grand Island Fire Department honored a third grader from each of our district's elementary as winner for the annual GIFD Third Grade Home Fire Escape Plans recognition. Lastly, for my staff shadow, today I would like to recognize a staff member who is very dear to me, Ms. Allegria, or as I know her, Grisella. Grisella is one of our incredible preschool peers at Lincoln Elementary. She's an active, involved member of our community who looks out for every single student who has her class. Personally, I've seen Ms. Allegria go out of her way to help kids in any way she can. She has even taken the initiative to ensure that students in need have essential items, reflecting her deep dedication and kind heart. On a more personal note, she has supported my family in meaningful ways, connecting us to meaningful resources and becoming someone we can rely on. She does this not only for us, but for many families in our community, serving as a bridge between families and the community, connecting them. Her compassionate compassion towards every student she meets is deeply appreciated and makes a positive impact on every child lucky enough to have her as an educator. With that being said, I am open for any questions surrounding my report.
No questions? Thank you for your report, Ms. Shakara Ramos. Item eight point three, Superintendent Report, Mr. Matt Fisher.
All right, just going off of a few of the things that Catherine talked about, you know, would congratulate the cast and crew and, and directors of Shrek, because it was a really, really good show. So hopefully, a lot of the people in the community got a chance to see it, because it, it really was top-notch, and kudos to those people that were involved with that. Catherine also mentioned the Project Search Career Fair, and that, I had the opportunity to, to take that in. Great, great chance for the students that are in Project Search to, to talk about careers that, that they're interested in and, and present information about different disabilities. And so, again, it was, you know, one of those neat opportunities to see our, our kids in action and, and, you know, hear about things that they're interested in. So that was fun. Now, that wasn't as much fun as the third grade fire escape piece, because yesterday I did get to go over to Shoemaker, and I just went to, you know, kind of support that. And I got invited to go up on the ladder truck and do the big spin around up a hundred foot in the air, so that was pretty exciting. So again, you know, that's very representative of the, you know, I think the interest that our fire department takes in really working with our schools to, to really promote fire safety. And so again, that's kind of a cul- culminating event for, you know, some of the work that they're doing there. Wanted to mention that Senator Quick is going to be at BAR throughout the morning tomorrow. One of the projects that the, the State Education Association did was to really reach out to senators and encourage them to, to get into schools within their district, and Senator Quick agreed to spend the morning at BAR. He's gonna start the day off with a, an assembly with the students there and, and then be there visiting classes throughout the morning. Mitch has got students lined up who are going to do a podcast interview with Senator Quick, so should be, should be a good morning there with the senator. Catherine also mentioned the State Education Conference, which takes place next week. Starts with the pre-conferences on Wednesday, and then the main conference is Thursday, Friday, and Grand Island Senior High is going to be doing one of the breakout sessions, the eleven fifteen breakout session on Thursday, and Catherine and several of the other students from GISH are gonna be there with Mr. Hubbard and, and a couple of teachers to really talk about how the, the policy was implemented, and then some of the positives, some of the negatives that we've run into, because, and I expect it to be a, a full session, since the state has mandated that all schools are going to have a, a policy in play. And I think, you know, we know just from the past couple of years how many schools have been interested in and have came and looked at our policy, so I think we'll, we'll have a good turnout for that. State test results are kind of out right now. They are out in an embargoed format, which means we've seen them. They are going to be coming out publicly on November twenty-sixth, so that's, I think, the day before Thanksgiving, and so they'll come out at that point in time. And, you know, our, our principals have had those dates, or those, those results for a few weeks now, and have been really working with their staff to kind of analyze where, you know, where things are going well and, and, you know, where there are things that, you know, maybe were disappointing in terms of those scores. So, you know, work is already underway to utilize those scores, but they haven't been released publicly yet. The last thing I wanted to mention, since we talked money a couple of different times tonight, we did get notification, and actually Bryce Wilson from the Department of Education reached out personally to, to Virgil and myself to, to notify us that we were going to have a significant loss of funds in the state aid recalculation. And basically, what he explained happened, and he was very apologetic, because it was NDE's mistake. With our, our CPE lunch, they were supposed to be utilizing a percentage based on what our free and reduced numbers were previously for doing the poverty calculation in the state aid formula. They used all of our students, because all of them qualified under the CEP. So basically, our poverty number was higher than it should have been this past year, and so they will be making an adjustment on that. And so, you know, we're aware of it, and, you know, again, we are in good shape. Our reserves are at a, you know, a, a high level. We'll certainly be able to absorb, you know, the, the loss of funding that we're gonna see at, you know, but it is, you know, anytime you lose funding, it's never a good thing, but it's, it's the reality. And, and, and the, the fact of the matter is, is they've done it for several years, they're only correcting one year. Of course, they have to correct the year that we became district-wide instead of just the buildings, but, you know, that's the way it is, I guess. But in the end, we actually got more money than we should have over the course of several years, and this is just a correction of the one year. So, so that's, you know, one of those things you, as, as Virgil says, the state giveth and the state taketh away. So that, that concludes my report. Any questions anyone would have?
Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Move on to item number nine, Executive Session for the Purpose of Negotiations, because it's in the best interest of the public to discuss this matter in closed session. I entertain a motion.
Make a recommendation to the board to convene to executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations.
Motion by Mr. Barcenas, second by Mrs. Albers. You may proceed to vote. You may proceed to vote.
I'd like to make a motion that the board reconvene from executive session.
Motion by Mrs. Albers, second by Mr. Barcenas. Proceed to a vote. Vote passes, time is now seven twenty-one PM. No action required, notification of upcoming board meeting-